Good afternoon. I'd like to call this meeting of City Council for February 7, 2023, to order. I have the privilege of representing Mayor Higgin at this time. He's a little under the weather, but he is with us online, as well as Councillor Croson. So as Deputy Mayor, I have the privilege to be chairing today's meeting. Before, I'd like to just do a roll call, if possible. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Parker. Councillor Campbell?
Present.
Councillor Carlson?
Present.
Councillor Croson?
Present.
Councillor Dodick?
Present.
Councillor Middleton-Hope?
Present.
Councillor Palladino?
Present.
Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel?
Here.
Mayor Higgin?
Present.
Deputy Mayor?
Here.
All present.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. I'd like to now read the acknowledgement statement. The City of Lethbridge acknowledges that we are gathered on the lands of the Blackfoot People of the Canadian Plains and pays respect to the Blackfoot People past, present, and future, while recognizing and respecting their cultural heritage, beliefs, and relationships to the land. The City of Lethbridge is also home to the Medi Nation of Alberta, Region Three. Announcements, bouquets, acknowledgements. I will start with Councillor Dodick.
I'm good.
I'm glad you're doing good. Councillor Campbell?
Just another update, 100th anniversary of Playgoers. Are you gonna... Sorry, did I take it wrongly?
I'm sorry.
Just opens tonight, The Play That Goes Wrong, 100th Anniversary. It's amazing. Go see the show runs all this week. At the Aids.
Councillor Carlson?
He got it.
Perfect. Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel?
Thank you very much. A few items from me this week. Thank you to South Glow-Grow for having myself and Abby Sloback from Opportunity Lethbridge participate in their trip to Calgary for a meeting with Invest Alberta. It was a great opportunity for us to connect with other members of the region and learn more about their investment opportunities, as well as what Invest Alberta has in store for Southern Alberta. A shout out to the members and participants of Team Lethbridge for another successful mission. We had our wrap-up session on January 27, and are now looking forward to some of the future planning from there. Thank you to Trevor and his EDL team for all of their hard work. A few of us were also able to attend the Chinese Cultural Association's Year of the Rabbit celebrations on January 28. Thank you to that group for an amazing celebration and what they do in our community. And also, thank you to everyone who came out for the mandatory recycling and organics business open house. It was great to see everybody out, hear their concerns, and listen to what the community has to say. I understand our team here is prepping and has some information up on the website right now about the mandatory organics program, and they are interested in meeting with and talking to anybody who has any concerns in the community. So, thank you very much. And finally, thanks to Exhibition Park for their AGM last week. Certainly, a lot of opportunity is going to be presented with the new Egg Hub, and we're looking forward to that opening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Councillor Middleton-Hope?
Thank you. Just certainly, both congratulations, and perhaps they may want to check with their mental health professionals, those of us that jumped in the polar plunge on the weekend. It was cold, but it was for a good cause. The sheriffs, LPS, and other members of the law enforcement community came together to work with those involved in Special Olympics, and all the funding goes towards supporting athletes around the province. So it was a good cause, and we managed to survive. Thank you.
Thank you very much for doing that, to all the people that participated in that. Councillor Croson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. With the melting and refreezing of the ice over the last few weeks, it can, of course, block the street drains. And over the last few weeks, I've noticed several residents around the entire community chipping at that ice, unplugging those street drains. I don't have their names, but I just wish to send them a great thank you. We have amazing community members who are always actively working on our community. I also want to give kudos to the firefighters who fought the blaze at the Boan Tong building, and for the incredible person who... Unfortunately, we lost the Boan Tong, but amazingly, they managed to keep the Wing Wah Chung, the Kwong An Lung building that's next door. They shared a wall, and kudos to whomever was able to do that work and maintain that second historic building.
Thank you, Councillor Croson. Councillor Palladino?
I have nothing to add.
Mayor Higgin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Couple things, most of them have been covered here. Thank you, Acting Mayor, and the rest of you for bringing forward some things that have happened over the past couple of weeks. Exciting things within our community. I did want to touch on two things. The Sirens... Sirens... Excuse me. The Sirens for Life, an event that happened last Thursday, and it's ongoing here for Canadian Blood Services. So we're donating plasma, and it was emergency services, kind of a friendly competition between police and fire. And all those that attended, thank you very much for attending and donating plasma. And the last one I want to touch base on is the Polar Bear Plunge, and probably I'm speaking here now from home because of it, but that's all right. It was a great cause, and it was a lot of money that was raised for Special Olympics. So, Councillor Middleton-Hope has managed to weather it better than I did by the sounds of it, but thanks for all those that participated and the funds that were raised for that great cause. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and hopefully you're back to work real... While you're working, but hopefully we get to see you in person real soon. Thank you, members of City Council. I have the following resolution, signed by Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel, the Adoption of the Agenda 3.0. Be resolved that the agenda of the regular meeting of City Council on February 17, 2023, be adopted as presented. And City Clerk, is there anything that we need to be added?
No, Deputy Mayor, there are no additions to this agenda or revisions. Thank you.
Acting Mayor?
I'll call for the vote.
All those in favor? Carries? And I'm guessing if I have to do anything online, I'll find out, but if I don't hear anything from you folks online, I'm going to take it as you are in support. All right, I have the Consent Agenda, signed by myself. Usually, the Deputy Mayor signs off on this, so I'll do double duty here. Consent Agenda, item 4.0. Be resolved that the minutes of the following meeting of City Council be approved for... Oh, sorry. A Mayor and City Clerk be authorized to sign the same for City Council Meeting 0124-2023. And further be resolved that City Council receive the information for the following reports, Status of Directed Resolutions 02-07-2023, and the Procurement Summary December 2022. And further be resolved that City Council approve the recommendations contained within the following Standing Policy Committee reports. I'm not going to read them all out. They're all behind me here. But members of Council, if you do have any questions in regards to any of these items, as most people know, this is published on our website, so there's a detailed report of each one of these items. But if a member of Council would like one of these items removed or voted on separately, I would just ask that at this time. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of Consent Agenda?
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, I do have some questions.
Please do. Thank you, Councillor Croson.
Sorry, under the Status of Directed Resolutions, we have a couple of things coming forward to some Standing Policy Committees. ARLOC, Reconciliation Lethbridge Advisory Committee, we're having the Terms of Reference coming forward to governance. Does any member of the administration through the City Manager know when we might be expecting that?
Through the Deputy Mayor, unfortunately, I don't. I will have to get back to you, Councillor Croson, on that date. I'm not aware of the date at this time.
Okay. And the other one, similarly, Affordable Housing Advocacy Update, that's going to the Advocacy SBC. Do we have any date for that, when we'll be seeing that?
Councillor Croson, that can come to the next Advocacy Committee.
Okay. I'll make sure I make note to make sure I attend, even though I'm not on the Committee. I'd like to see that one. Under the Procurement Report, we have COL 22241, Credit Card Service Fees Tempus Module. We're looking at having a user-pay principal approach for credit cards at a cost of $28,350. Can somebody just run me through what that actually entails and how it will affect the community?
Mr. Matthews?
Through the Chair to Councillor Croson, in regards to the actual Tempus Credit Card Module, how that works right now is we're starting off in this process to be able to buy the module that would allow admin charges to go on to certain items. That could include everything from business licenses, development permits, potentially taxes as well, and utilities in the future. However, that would be a different module. So right now, this part of our overall focus on our e-commerce component of our moving along in our business plan and treasury financial services. So it's one of the areas that we're looking at, providing further services. So one thing I'll just mention on this, though, its intent is not to replace... So you have to use credit card necessarily. There'll be other options provided throughout the city. So still check, cash, you know, coming in if you came into City Hall here from that point of view, or mail, as well as, you know, debit and so forth. So just another avenue, one of the things we're trying to get to on our overall e-commerce.
When will the public see that implemented? Or do we have any timeline on that?
Through the Chair to Councillor Croson, not... First of all, we have to go through and do the testing phases and take a look at, you know, the module and get it into place. Whether or not it'll be this spring or this fall, you know, that would be, I would say, the earliest. Most likely, I would say later in the fall, or even potentially even next year.
The only thing I request is that you kind of keep Council updated on that, because I think we'll be getting emails.
We will do.
Thanks. Thank you, Councillor Croson. Any further questions on the Consent Agenda at this time? Seeing none, I would call the question on acceptance of the Consent Agenda. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving right along in our agenda, item 5.1, Presentations. Mr. Andrew Malcolm, Urban Revitalization Manager, Regarding Rapid Housing Initiative Municipal Funding Requests. And welcome. And if anyone else who is joining you, I'd like this opportunity to introduce them. That would be great.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Deputy Mayor and members of Council. Today, I'm joined up here with Logan Barthlow, who is our Development Project Coordinator with Opportunity Lethbridge. And we will be presenting the funding request related to the Rapid Housing Initiative project. And before I begin, I'd just like to acknowledge that we've been working closely with our folks in community social development and planning and design to bring forward this presentation. Next slide, please. So back in July of 2022, Council brought forward an official business motion asking administration how we could support the community applicants in being more successful with the Rapid Housing Initiative, a federal program that was launched for affordable housing in our country. So we returned on September 13 to provide information, seven different pieces that we think we could do to better position the community of Lethbridge, as well as applicants, for this opportunity. Through that resolution, one additional was added by Council to bring forward items within the operating budget that would have either financial or resourcing impacts. And so altogether, there was an eight-part resolution. So since this time, administration has been very busy working on these. I'd love to say that all eight were in front of you today as a way that we could support applicants, but I'm happy to say that we have three that we think are going to well-position, or potentially well-position applicants, for this opportunity. So the first one is number one. Our folks in planning and design have made some changes to their intake process, and so as an affordable housing project comes in, it basically jumps the queue and would be considered in a review ahead of others, which really helps us address the timeliness factor. Number four, utilizing CC49 and the approved funding to support grant applications. We'll touch on that later in the presentation as a bit of a revised approach to that. And number six, providing increased levels of support to strategically prioritized RHI, who are here behind me with three applications. Next slide. So really quick overview, is the Rapid Housing Initiative is a federal funding opportunity administered through Canada Mortgage Housing. It's a $1.5 billion opportunity with $1 billion allocated to the project stream, of which Lethbridge would be eligible to apply within, has a March 15 deadline, and the proposed project must be able to be completed by January 1, 2025, hence the term "rapid." Projects will be prioritized based on a number of minimum eligibility criteria, including cost sharing, expediency, and community need, amongst others. And a big part of why we're here today is around that cost sharing, looking for municipal support, as it's one of the most important criteria, representing about 20% of the available points. Next slide, please. As mentioned, the September 13 resolution indicated that we should utilize CC49, our Affordable and Social Housing Capital Grant, and the approved funding as a way to support RHI. We're coming forward to say that the process behind CC49 doesn't necessarily lend itself to this rapid approach to this funding opportunity, but the funding source certainly does. And so at the end of the day here, we're suggesting that we utilize that funding, but we take a different approach, and we bypass the capital grant process, primarily based on the tight timelines. So the review process that we do with those applications is much longer than we have to support this process. And the second piece is that that policy has a requirement for eligible projects to have secured their development and building permits prior to application. And again, based on the timeliness, we haven't got that. That would come after the fact. So, next slide, please. So it raises a bit of a question around risk mitigation. If we're moving quickly and we're not following our process, how are we being sure that we're doing our proper risk mitigation? And we really believe that we can lean on Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation as the first step in that process. They can do a much more rigorous, and will do a much more rigorous vetting of these applications on a national stage than we would probably be able to ever do. And that we would then suggest that Council recommend that any approval of funds today be conditional on actually securing that RHI funding, so that CMHC is doing a lot of the due diligence on our behalf. Next slide, please. So in terms of available capital funding, the currently... The city currently has $4.4 million in available funds within the Affordable and Housing Capital Grant Program. The applications... Or sorry, the city is currently in receipt of one application that's in process through our regular process. So we wanted to make that very clear, that there is a group who is applying for over $1 million that is currently in process, and Mr. Karim Motz from CSD is here to speak to that if there's questions on that particular application. Our available capital funding is made up of the D32 from the last CIP process, and our housing fund, which receives an annual allocation. Next slide, please. The start of this process, we initially engaged with 13 organizations in the community. Nine initiated one-on-one discussions around project alignment with the criteria, and we've trickled down to three who are all here today, representing applications that we believe are in alignment with the RHI program and would be strong candidates for consideration. Their three projects combined total a municipal funding request of $4.9 million. Next slide, please. Which is just short... Sorry, I should have said, is just short, or over $550,000 more than what we have currently allocated in our budget. So going forward, we see three options for each proposal: to approve the full funding request, approve a lesser amount, or reject the funding request. Some considerations that we put forward are, again, the total amount requested exceeds the current amount of funding available by $551,000. Approving of additional funds could be seen as a low-risk, high-reward due to the low likelihood that all three applications would actually receive approval at the federal level. Basically, if one or more do not receive the federal funding, the funding never gets spent and comes back into our coffers, and we're able to use it for other projects. In the scenario that all three were received RHI funding, it would represent a very good return on investment, where our close to $5 million would result in close to $40 million in affordable housing in our community. So again, could be perceived as a low-risk, high-reward move. Approving lesser amounts to any project will reduce the scoring by five to 30 points. In our conversations with CMHC, they've advised to us from the beginning that quality of applications is greater than the quantity of applications. So we just put that out there, that potentially lowering all three in their funding would actually potentially hinder all three on the RHI scale, as opposed to potentially choosing two and maximizing their points. Again, considerations. Next slide, please. Recognizing there are probably a ton of different combinations here, we've just put forward three for your consideration. First being approve all funding for the three requests, which would require an additional $551,000 in funding. This would support three strong applications, and again, that low-risk, high-reward in the perspective of administration. We could also approve funding for the top two, request on administration's understanding of the RHI rubric. We would have appropriate funding currently in place for that. We'd be supporting two strong applications, and projects that did not receive funding would still be able to apply, although they would be less competitive. Kind of picking the winners and losers, if you'd like, which is a tough term, but it's something that is a reality of where we're at. And then the third one is approving funding for all three requests, but at a lower amount. Again, we'd, you know, to be fair, you could reduce each funding request by 183,000, bringing it within the budget. This would reduce the strength of all the applications by five to 30 points, and is somewhat counter to the advice that we received from CMHC to date. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, the city can significantly assist organizations in improving their scoring on the applications. If successful, the city funding would represent anywhere between an eight and 40% of the proposed project's total budget. Just as a note, that through our capital grant, the city may fund up to 75% of a project. I can't comment on how much we've actually funded a project, but that's how the policy is written. And again, if successful, the city could leverage up to $33.9 million from other contributors, bringing close to $40 million of affordable housing to the community. And again, from a unit count, we'd be looking at about 132 units if all three projects were successful in the entire process. So with that, I will move to the recommendation, which is just that City Council provide a funding decision on each project individually. Further, that City Council make those funding decisions conditional on the successful securing of a Rapid Housing Initiative approval from the federal government. And further, that city funding be provided subject to the execution of a third-party contribution agreement, which would occur at a later date. So with that, we're here happy to answer any questions you may have, and I know all three applicants are here ready to do a verbal presentation on their projects.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm, for your presentation. I do... My cue does have some people, individuals who want to ask questions. I'm going to ask Council, did you want to hear the presentations first, or did you want to first answer questions to the context of the presentation? Let's do that first, then. Councillor Carlson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. To Mr. Malcolm, one of the things that stood out for me in reading the documentation was CMHC is recommending quality over quantity. And while I agree that these are three quality projects, would three from a municipality of our size be considered quantity? I hate pitting one against another, or not even putting one forward, but I'd rather give them one solid, or is that... Because that seems to be what they're asking for.
So from administration's perspective, we know their rubric. We don't know how they're going to score within some of their rubric points. So for us to say, what is the strongest application, has a ton of variables, that it's hard for us to pinpoint. The quantity versus quality is, I think, more around your decision around funding. So taking forward and putting max dollars to three applications puts yourself in a really good position as a community. If you're picking, though, and you only have limited amount of money coming from the city, we... Our recommendation would be to pick potentially one or two, as opposed to lowering the amount on all three, impacting the scores on all three. That's how we're really framing the concept of quantity versus quality.
And would, in your opinion, would these three projects be diverse enough from each other to not be actually competing against each other, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I believe so. And again, there's no indication from CMHC at this point that that there would be, you know, there's only one project that's going to be approved in Lethbridge. I think they're looking across the board at what are the good projects and what address community need. I think our folks in community social development, along with our applicants, have done a really good job of describing the need in Lethbridge, which we know is probably greater than 132 units, so.
Agreed. Thank you. Final question, Deputy Mayor, probably to Mr. Matthews, or City Manager, or Designate, perhaps. Approving all three of these would give us, I think Mr. Malcolm said, about a $550, $552,000 deficit. Do we have to identify, if Council approves all three, today, should we be identifying where those extra dollars would come from? And I was wondering... And I was wondering, in that consideration, is part of the annual funding that's available over in the next four years, thousand a year, would that be a possibility?
So, to, through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Carlson, so a couple of different options here for council to consider. You are correct, there is, so the amount that we're looking at right now is up to 2023. There's an additional 450,000, two, three more years of 150,000 each in '24, '25, and '26. However, if that was the case, that would use up all the funds for affordable housing, both in the CIP project as well as in the operational side. What, we'd still have a little bit of extra, we'd have to get somewhere else anyways, probably, I'm thinking, what, 110,000 or something around that, around that range there. So, if council wanted to do them all, the recommendation would be to take it from the 10 million that the set aside last CIP exactly for this purpose. One of the reasons for that 10 million, council of the day there decided that they wanted some money for matching grants. And so, what my recommendation would be, would be for council to actually today in the resolution, if this so wishes to do that, to put the 551,000 from that amount that leaves 450,000 for anything else that comes up in '24, '25, and '26 as other funding within the affordable housing.
Okay, if I can just follow up to that. The 10 million that we left in the CIP for matching, there are funds, there'd be some funds that would maybe be applicable to this, some that may not be, or are you talking using some other grant or funding that has no strings attached? I'm just trying to think of what fund we would use or where we'd take it from.
So, for that 10 million dollars, I'd have to go back and take a look in there, but I think there's sufficient room inside of that throughout either our reserves or other components that we would be able to match to. So, as we're, if that's where council wishes to go for the 551,000, I will work with my team behind the scenes.
Find it.
And to find it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Counselor Milton Hope?
I'm waiting for some information from the city clerk, so I'd be prepared to cede my position.
Very good. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thanks for the report. Maybe this will be answered later, but I know historically when we've been looking for federal funding, some, one of the issues has been rezoning issues. Are we dealing with any rezoning issues with these three projects as we go forward right now? And if so, that could have an impact on us getting that funding.
Yeah, so there are individual property details that I'd probably leave to the applicants to talk about where they're at, but our understanding of this, again, with the rapid and the timeline in mind, is we're only bringing forward projects that we believe are in position to do so. So, our understanding today is that all three projects that are presenting today have the approval or the zoning approvals in place and would be able to move forward with development permit and building permits in time. The big difference and the big thing is, is that typically we've had struggles with supportive housing. All three projects behind me or being presented today are just strictly affordable housing, so they get treated much like any mixed-use multifamily development in our community.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Counselor Dodek?
Thank you. Mr. Malcolm, in your options page on your slide, it suggests that one of the reasons of approving additional funds or that it would be low risk is because there'd be a low likelihood of all three projects receiving RHI approval. So, that sort of, sort of ties into Counselor Carlson's question. You must have had some sense of a low likelihood of receiving approval, so I'm trying to figure out, why would you put that in the report? And sort of leave it for us to try to figure out if we approve all three, that maybe none might be approved at the end of the day because of the quality/quantity? And I understand your comments to that, but I'm just, why did you put in low likelihood? What sense did you have to be able to put that in there? Not sense, but what were you thinking of?
I think our team is thinking along those lines because of how many conversations we've had with CMHC and have a very good understanding of how many applications are becoming across the country for this. Very competitive project or application process. Past intakes have seen huge numbers of applications with very few being funded.
So, again, going back to what Counselor Carlson was talking about, if we just put, saying, "Look, we're going with one project," do you have a sense that by doing so, there's more likelihood of approval versus doing or supporting all three or it's still, who knows?
Administration has done as much due diligence as we possibly can in understanding the RHI rubric, meeting with CMHC, meeting with all the applicants and understanding their projects. We'd be prepared to offer some thoughts on that to council. Our preference would be in camera just to protect the confidential nature of different projects, but we can certainly give you that information. Again, it's the best of our knowledge. We're not going to be involved in the CMHC review, so we'll do our best and we're prepared to provide you that information.
Having made that comment, does that mean that the decision must be made today or does it not have to be made today?
We strongly recommend a decision is made today. The deadline is March 15th. I believe the next council meeting is February 21st. And the applicants behind me will have to take this information and finish their applications, which means they're very tight. So, I think the preference for everybody would be a decision today, but it's not necessarily the be-end.
So, based on those two comments together, are you suggesting that perhaps it might be in order to go, after the presentations are finished, to go briefly into in-camera to discuss exactly what you had mentioned?
I think so.
Okay, and my final question is, I didn't quite understand, you said approving lesser amounts to any project will reduce scoring by five to 30 points. So, is that on a scale of 100, 1,000 or?
So, the total amount of points to the rubric is 145. 20% of those points are available based on the cost-sharing aspect. And so, depending on which organization, because they all have different formulas that make up their contribution, whether it's a provincial grant, our funding, their own money, or strictly going after the RHI. So, there's different percentages and we have our spreadsheets that we can work and make those adjustments and let you know how we think it is going to impact the scoring, but that's the genesis of that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation, for the information. For a larger view, we have another group that you said is coming through the program that is looking for $1 million. Need to know before or after March 31st, which is when we would hear back from CMHC.
I'm going to defer that to Ms. Moats to talk about where that one's in in the
There is no deadline of March 31st for the application that's in the queue under the Affordable Social Housing Grant processes. And I just wanted to confirm that that ask is 1.5 million.
1.5 million? Okay, and with that one, are they, again, without giving us details, are they looking at something where they have to have matching funds from municipalities as well? Is that a concern for the one they're going with without giving us any details really?
They are asking for this funding as a matching component, but they have already secured their CMHC co-investment fund. They are not coming forward under this rapid housing initiative that Mr. Malcolm is speaking to today.
No, I'm aware of that, but will their project be hurt if they do not get matching funds from the city?
It potentially could be, but there's no deadline of March 31st.
We would have some time to make some decisions. Okay, thank you. That was my only question, Deputy Mayor.
Mayor Higgin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Question I have for Mr. Malcolm, we've heard about the $10 million that we set aside previous council for matching grants in the CIP from Mr. Matthews. And my question to you is, this, the funding that we've got, and as I look at it, 4.9 out of the 39 million, which is, which is great. I mean, anytime, I believe that you could have, I mean, it's, we'll say pennies on the dollars note really that way, but it's very, it's, it looks good. It looks good on paper. My question to you is, we talked about securing funding from CMHC, that of course, our funding would not be given out until that funding was secured. Does that also include other funding sources as well? Because I imagine if you look at one, I'll just pick one, for example, 14 million dollars, we're given 1.5. There'd be additional dollars obviously that would have to be found from donors, et cetera. Is ours released only if CMHC okay's it or does everything have to be in order?
So, each applicant or application is going to have a different makeup of the funds that create their project. Some have secured their own organization's funds. I'm sure some have done fundraising. Some are reliant on provincial grants or provincial funding that may or may not come before that date. Again, this is, there's probably a lot of uncertainty for these groups behind me in terms of getting that application in. Of course, the ones that they have confirmed funding for, CMHC will probably look at as very positively. Ones that are conditional or pending are probably ones that will lower their scoring or consideration in that. I can't speak to them. Maybe each applicant can talk to how secure those other funding sources are. Our focus would be on that city aspect. And again, that's why we're looking for the approval of city funds for them so that they can take that forward within their application and at least that aspect is secured and strong.
Thank you very much. And I do have further questions, but I could only imagine they'll be answered by the applicants and so I'll wait until after we hear those presentations. Thank you.
Counselor Milton Hope?
Thank you, and this question is through the city manager to his designate. In regards to any of these projects, have any of these come before an SPC and/or council before for approval?
To, through the deputy mayor to Counselor Milton Hope, I do not believe these ones have actually came through. Want to go, Ms.?
Just, I can hop in there and say the Blackfoot Family Lodge secured funding for a different phase of their project through the capital grant. Details on those different phases I would leave to them to describe to you.
So, this is not the same funding? This is for a different phase of that same project, which we have agreed to fund assuming that a third-party participant is involved?
I think they're considered different projects. So, they came forward with a phase kind of individually. They received, I believe, I'm going to look to Ms. Moats, 300,000. They received 300,000 for that phase of the project and they're currently working on that independently. This is a separate phase of the project at which they're coming forward with this ask through the RHI. That's my understanding and again, I'll probably defer to the applicants to describe it in any more detail. But Blackfoot Family Lodge already has $300,000 in capital funding from the city approved.
Left me a gog because I certainly remember those discussions differently in terms of the allocation of funds. That was substantially more than 300,000.
There's also the Aboriginal Housing Society who came most recently and got 1.5 million. They are not here today.
All right, so these, none of these projects have come before us before then?
That is correct because the one for Blackfoot Family Lodge was within the administrative purview to approve up to 300,000. Thank you.
Mayor Higgin?
Thank you. I just popped out, I just was going to mention that to Counselor Milton Hope, but that was a different project at 1.5, but that was already answered. Thank you.
Okay, so perfect. So, we've had all the questions in regards to your presentation and putting context. I'm now going to, we have three presentations and I know each presenter's been told that they have five minutes. So, in no specific order here, but I will start with item one, that being the Blackfoot Family Lodge. And feel free to come to the microphone and when you do, please state who will be presenting and so we have to put some names to faces as well, so. And welcome to City Hall. Welcome and thank you for coming and making a presentation. And if you, there's three live mics up there. If you could use the podium, you could sit down, whatever you feel most comfortable with.
Greetings to you all. I am here on behalf of the Blackfoot Family Lodge Society. My name is Mary Ann Crow Healy and I'd like to introduce the Soaring Hearts Project Dream Team. Please stand, fellas. I know they were getting a little tired. Okay, so we're here to request a 40% contribution from the city of Lethbridge to leverage 60% from the federal government's Rapid Housing Initiative for Phase Three of the Soaring Hearts Project. Canada's National Housing Strategy launched the Rapid Housing Initiative in 2020 for the rapid construction of new affordable housing units. We can do rapid. The Soaring Hearts Project is practically shovel-ready. We have the land, proper zoning, even the development permit is in place. This project started in 2007 with community meetings and two years later, property acquisition made possible by direct control zoning for transitional housing for indigenous women, 50 child daycare, and green space. In 2021, we applied for and received a provincial grant of $3.4 million to build 14 three-bedroom units for women and children. We hired locally Westbridge Construction, Alvin Fritz Architect, Martin Geomatics, Cedar Ridge Construction, and MSK Development. The Soaring Hearts Project is a three-phase dream. Phase one will be completed by the first day of summer. Phase two is the daycare. Phase three is why we are here today. A two-story net zero building with six fully accessible two-bedroom ground-level units. Above them, six more two-bedroom units. These 12 units are self-contained. We learned from COVID-19. The total cost is $4,925,600. We are asking for $1,970,240. The RHI takes a human rights-based approach to housing, serving people experiencing or at risk of homelessness, women and children fleeing domestic violence, seniors, young adults, indigenous peoples, people with disabilities. These are the women we serve. The Lethbridge Point in Time Count Report that came out in December, this past December, notes that there were 51 unsheltered indigenous women and 35 sheltered indigenous women on that day here in Lethbridge. With this project, we can initially provide transition housing for at least 24 of those We have operated a transition home here in Lethbridge for 30 years. We are knowledgeable in all aspects of property management, accessing subsidies for our residents, and funding for our support programs. We have a 10-year sustainability plan with 26 affordable housing units, a 50 child daycare, and other social enterprises. We are confident in the viability of our organization and this project. We appreciate your time and consideration of our request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healy, for your presentation. Members of council, are you okay if we hear all three presentations and then we'll entertain questions? Is that okay? Sure, perfect. And thank you for being within time. Greatly appreciate it. Moving right along, the Blood Tribe Housing. And welcome.
Okay. I said, "Okay." What do you say? Louder, I can't hear you. All right, good. My name is Travis Plated here. I'm from the Blood Tribe. I got Corey Thompson here and I should use his Blackfoot name, but I forgot it. But I've got Tony Delaney who is also, we are another members of Blood Tribe Chief and and Council Housing Committee here with us. Today, our ask is 1.5. And the ask is for a fifty-two unit housing development on the north side. And we can give you details on all of that. But it is elders, students, and people with disabilities. And as you know, a lot of our members from the Blood Tribe called Lethbridge home, including myself, for many years. And there's always been a need for housing for our people, especially our students and some of us that work here in the city of Lethbridge. So the tribe has always wanted to take on a, some type of housing development here in the city. And over in this past term with the new council, we've really taken that initiative of providing proper housing for our members. And obviously, a lot of our members live here in the city of Lethbridge. So it only makes sense that we partner with not only the city, but also the funders for this particular project. We see, as you all know, we did sign MOU this past year with the city of Lethbridge. It is in the spirit of that. This is one of the initiatives that this particular council has taken on. We have other projects that we are working on, on reserve. But we really feel the need of filling this need here in the city. And we have a potentially awesome project going here. The province and the tribe will be contributing 4.1 million. And the 1.5 million that we're asking from the city of Lethbridge will assist, obviously, in acquiring the 8.4 million through the Rapid Housing Initiative, through the federal government. So as I said earlier, this is a new initiative. I don't think the tribe has ever entered into any type of a project like this off-reserve. But other nations throughout Western Canada, throughout Canada for that matter, realize that the vast majority of their members are not living on the reserve, simply because of whether it be schooling, employment, what have you. So it's important that we begin working together with the city here and providing adequate housing for our members here. That's pretty much all I really had to say here. Let's check my notes, make sure I'm not forgetting anything. And I guess I should apologize for not acknowledging a mayor here. It's too bad you're not here. Your mayor has this Blackfoot name. And if the rest of you don't have Blackfoot names, we'll take care of that. It'll cost you 1.5. So once again, thank you. I don't want to take up too much of your time. And we'll look forward to your, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Platedhair. And of course, there'll probably be questions a little later on after the third presentation. Our, our third presentation is My City Care, Lethbridge. And welcome to City Hall. And feel free to have your team come forward, grab a chair or mic, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin, Deputy Mayor, members of City Council. We promise that we will call you any name you'd like for 1.5. I am joined by Ms. Diane Rando and our team, Mr. Douglas Bergen and Executive Director of My City Care, Ms. Jen Trivel. My name is Kelly Stiggle. I am the lead pastor of Parallel Church. Two years ago, we changed the name of our church to Parallel because we have a vision to come alongside the community in which we serve. Six years ago, we started My City Care for the purpose of empowering our community to be safe, healthy, and thriving. We do this by activating organizations and individuals to meet the six basic needs Jesus instructed us to in Matthew 25, which is food, clothing, housing, health, water, and justice. Just in the last year alone, we were able to help thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-two individual needs within Lethbridge. We handed out eighty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-six meals, provided fifty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-four clothing items, and handed out one thousand thirty-seven unique hygiene kits to women in need. We also partnered with ninety-one agencies within the community and invested six thousand nine hundred and twenty-five volunteer hours. This is just what we did in Lethbridge. On top of this, we met similar needs in fifty-three other communities in Alberta and another seventy-seven communities in B.C. In May of 2021, the community and social development for the city challenged the faith community at Lima to become engaged in the current housing crisis within the city of Lethbridge. As My City Care, we believe that housing is a basic human right. We also recognize that of the six needs we targeted for our mission, we have yet to address housing. Therefore, we immediately booked a follow-up meeting and learned more of the specific needs facing our community. We recognize the current need in Lethbridge, as evidenced in our daily interaction with people through My City Care. Thirty-nine hundred households in our community are in core housing need. We also recognize the future need for affordable housing within our community and our current economy and the projected population increase of eighteen point four percent by 2025. We recognize the need for affordable housing for the indigenous population. We also recognize the need for affordable housing for the incoming immigrant population. And currently, seventy percent of those we serve are immigrants or new Canadians. We recognize the increasing pressures inflation is placing on young families, particularly single mothers. And because of those needs, our priority population for this inclusive project is women and children of all ethnicities. A point of interest is that twenty-four thousand, over twenty-four thousand individuals we helped last year were children under age eighteen. Our proposed project is not supportive living. It is not transitional housing. It is not an emergency shelter. We desire to provide affordable, sustainable housing that is environmentally responsible for today and tomorrow. We are planning a net-zero project. And because of who we are and how we are currently active within our community, we believe we will be a great system navigator to provide a continuum of community care for those who are housed within our property. I will now turn it over to Ms. Diane Rando to give you the specifics of the project.
Thank you very much, Pastor Kelly and Deputy Mayor and members of City Council. My role within this project is to facilitate the project itself and work closely with a very significant team. My City Care is requesting 1.5 million as the city's contribution in our application for the Rapid Housing Initiative and other funding grants. All planning and construction is administered through a diverse, qualified professional project team with Douglas Bergen as the project manager. Douglas is also here and will be available to respond to any questions you may have regarding the project. The construction will be grant-funded. It will include all levels of government, provincial and federal. And also, we will be pursuing green funding initiatives for the net-zero build. There is no other net-zero build in southern Alberta, and we anticipate that this will be a demonstration project that will signal our city's commitment to climate change. The total estimated cost, land and construction, twenty-two million. The volatility and cost of construction materials is recognized, and we have compensated that in our budget. To the best known at this time, an updated was just presented. Experience in the market and the trades were considered in developing the most recent. Operating costs, two-hundred-and-five thousand. The surplus, and the surplus is to be utilized for ongoing future builds and reflects the future sustainability of housing for people living with low incomes. They are well-positioned to build further projects. All seventy-six units will be available to people living with low incomes at sixty percent of the current market rent. And I went on rentals.ca just today, and two-bedroom units' market rent in Lethbridge is now eighteen hundred dollars, an increase of twenty-seven percent over the last year. Requested funding will not only fulfill the requirements of contributions for other funders, but will signal our city's partnership and commitment to providing safe and affordable housing that is future-oriented, sustainable, and demonstrates the support of all people in Lethbridge. It is aligned with the municipal housing strategy and the national housing strategy. The unique features of this demonstration project include it's located in the crossings on a property that is zoned multifamily and amenable to the net-zero requirements. The site selected is aligned with the crossings' master plan. This project has demonstrated discernment and a natural progression in its decision for its location. The team is experienced with planning, construction, and property management. People will be well-served in this location with access to all amenities: school, transportation, employment, green space, library, recreation, retail. And the daycare and gathering space will be completed at a later time. It's not part of this RHI application. This will be a concrete build of seventy-six units apartment style, features a quality build of four stories that is a fluid design for an efficient build. It includes underground parking. And you can imagine what that would be for women and children to have underground parking and not having to clear off windshields in the middle of the winter. It includes, it will have a hundred-year lifespan. So think about that hundred-year lifespan with at least twenty-plus years of deep affordability at sixty percent. This is a safe place and uniquely designed and net-zero build to meet the current and future needs of families, women, and children living with low incomes. It features twenty-one bedroom, twenty-two bedroom, and thirty-six three-bedroom units. Fifteen of these units will be accessible. The total number of bedrooms is a hundred and seventy-six beds. That's one bed per bedroom. You know that families work a little differently than that. The design includes an elevator and designed for ease of access and functionality, both for a mom with a stroller or with a person with mobility aids. For example, the flooring, the door handles, the faucet handles, the main doors in the elevator are accessible. We believe this is an investment and signals the city's partnership to make a difference through the support of a project that incorporates a caring and tangible initiative that is long-term, is sustainable, results-oriented, and will have a significant return on investment. For a cost of eighty-five hundred dollars per bedroom, this funding contribution of 1.5 million is an investment of seven percent of the total cost to provide a hundred and seventy-six bedrooms over the next twenty-plus years in a net-zero building with a lifespan of a hundred years. It is an opportunity for our community to seize this investment in the health and well-being of people, to have safe, accessible space to raise their families. And through My City Care and its extensive volunteer base, we'll have enhanced access to the supports available in Lethbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Randle, and fall to your team. And thank you to each and every one of you for your presentation. And thanks for trying to be within the time parameters, because I know time is important. But I think your points were given correctly and properly, and that's what I appreciate. I'm now going to entertain questions from council in regards to all three of the presentations. And I just do ask, when you do answer, there are people online. Do you make sure you come to the mic and answer the questions that way? That'd be greatly appreciated. Councilor Carlson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My question was for Mr. Platedhair, Travis, but I think he ran out of the room.
Mr. Delaney probably can answer.
Thank you. And it was just some clarity. I thought Travis, Mr. Platedhair mentioned that the tribe had already committed 4.1, but in my notes, it's only 1.5 million. So maybe I misheard? I just wanted to get some clarity on that.
Yeah. So that's a contributor, the new numbers is, are 4.1. So the tribe is going to put up 1.6. The remaining will come from the provincial government as funding.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. The other question I have, actually, I think might be better to Mr. Malcolm in camera. So I'll hop out for now. Thank you.
Councilor Campbell?
Thank you. I guess this is just an in-general question about all of these projects. And that is, to who would want to answer it, is what if you don't get the money from the federal government? What if you don't get this approval? What happens to the projects? Does it just die for now? Or do you seek other means of money? So whoever wants to answer that.
So is that a question to all three?
Yeah, in general, yeah. I guess since you're here, we can ask, I can ask you that.
Yeah. We'll be moving forward.
With the project?
To secure other funding options.
This is something that needs to be done, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We, it hasn't been announced yet, but we have a housing initiative that we are starting, and it's going to be provincially.
And just sort of going on with our last presenter, who was sort of, you know, with the volatility of the market, do you have a contingency planned when you find out the price of lumber is going up one hundred and eighty percent or whatever? I mean, is that something that you consider with the amounts of money that you're looking for?
Yes. That's, our contingency is ten percent.
Okay. All right. And I guess it'd be the same question for the other two.
Ms. Healy, or Ms. Healy, or one of your representatives? Do you want to take on that question as well?
Basically asking what happens if you don't get the funding? The federal funding, that is.
We have already discussed this with the province. This was, this came up before, about a year ago, when we first came and got the three hundred thousand for the demolition of the church. And at that time, we talked with the people who had supported the current build, Phase One. And they said that if the city came up with funding, that they would consider it as well.
But then, if you don't get the federal funding?
Yes. Well, we, the federal funding was not even in our...
So I guess, I guess the question is, you'll continue with the project?
Oh, yes. Yeah. We have to.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
And Kelly, would you like to come answer that question as well?
We are committed to the project as well, and we would seek other funding.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Councilor Carlson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just a question on the range. It's quite a disparity of what's being asked percentage-wise for council to fund. It's what the new numbers is, Ms. Randle mentioned. It's between seven percent and forty percent. I guess the question is probably to Ms. Crowe Healy. If council decided to sort of, I don't want to say prorate, but I guess that's as good a choice as anything, would you just increase your ask from, if we said we've only got 4.4, so we're going to reduce everyone to be a little bit less? Or the group that's asking for the most, forty percent, might be reduced so that everyone gets an opportunity? I'll put it that way. Would you just increase your ask from the RHI funding? Or how would you approach that? Say we said...
I believe it's the RHI that's requesting the forty percent. They will come up with the sixty percent if the municipal government can come up with the forty percent.
Okay. So they have already communicated to you that they would need...
It's in the criteria.
Okay. Thank you for that. Then through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Mr. Malcolm. If you were talking about the RHI rubric and the funding, if one group has been told that they need forty percent from the municipality, have the other groups been told they only need seven or nine percent? I'm just, I'm struggling with the vast spread. Thank you. Councilor Dotick has his calculator out and has already done the percentages for me. So thank you. Seven point five to eleven. Thank you.
So the rubric itself gives points based on the percentage of cost sharing on a project. And so to maximize the, those points, you need forty percent cost share. Now, that forty percent cost share can be made up of a number of different contributors. Some projects proposed here have a provincial component. Some have their own money. Some are asking for the city's component to be that entire forty percent. So that's the difference. And it's difficult to put in front of you to make a decision on. We recognize that. But that's, that's the makeup of those numbers.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Mayor Higgin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A question for each, and sorry to make you have to come up again to the mic. But my question is, and it runs along with many different projects. We look at capital, and when capital dollars are expensed, we never look at operating dollars. And I want to ask each of you, with this, with the project that you have, will, is this going to be sustainable? Or is this going to be an ask for council in the future for operating?
So why don't we have, maybe, Kelly?
So why don't we have maybe Kelly or Mr. Plated? I know, I see Travis isn't here yet, so who'd want to answer that question for the... So maybe you can just rephrase the question as they come to the microphone?
Sure, thank you.
Restate it. Go ahead, Blaine.
Thank you, Mr. Delaney. I'm just curious to know, we've, if this funding was, if you're successful with this funding, will your project be sustainable? Or will there be further asks from council that you're aware of?
With our discussions, yeah, for operation, no, we won't be coming back.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that.
We have conducted a viability assessment of this project, and it is our opinion that we will not be back for our operating dollars, that it is a sustainable project.
Thank you, Ms. Randall.
We have a ten-year sustainability plan with twenty-six affordable housing units, a fifty-child daycare, and other social enterprises. We prefer not to be asking for funds from the different governments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Hagan. Counselor Palladino?
Deputy Mayor, quick question, a technical question, actually. It's not earth-shattering, but Ms. Randall, you mentioned that you were looking at, your project was seventy-six units, and the report I have has sixty-eight units, so did you grow eight units?
Thank you for that. The location of the project remained the same, but the footprint reduced because we chose not to do the daycare and the gathering space at this time, and wanted to make sure that it was all aligned with the crossings' master plan, as well as that it was all zoned appropriately, so that we could move forward quickly. So in that, the redesign of the configuration, it made sense to add those other units.
All right, thank you. Oh, and by the way, all three great projects, that's my opinion. Thanks.
Counselor Dotick?
Thank you. My question is to Ms. Crowe Healy. The, I was looking and crunching, excuse me, I was crunching the numbers and looking at the units, and the cost per unit for MyCityCare is two hundred and sixty-three thousand a unit for Blood Tribe Housing is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand per unit, but with the twelve units, using those numbers, it's at four hundred and ten thousand per unit. So maybe Mr. Kelly, who's standing up, is probably going to be able to answer that question much better. So why such a big difference?
Thank you, your worship, or, may I say, Counselor Dotick?
Your ex-worship.
The, I can't compare it directly to the other projects. They're all unique in their own way. This project is an infill. With the infill comes the demolition of an existing house that has hazardous materials that has to be handled correctly. The energy for the energy efficiency components was solar. The site development cost, again, with the infill nature, with that there's old infrastructure in the neighborhood that has to be addressed appropriately. The barrier-free units on the main floor have extra costs. And as alluded to before with some of the other presenters, the lack of control about inflation and supply chain that's currently in our economy, we've put in a contingency with this for overall project. But with this project, and I assume with the others, if it's not fully maximized, that the allocation that would come from the grantors would be reimbursed. So we need to demonstrate those costs.
Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel. We're all getting a little tongue-twisted here.
Thank you very much. And it's a question for all three groups as well. Since everybody appears to have their locations with zoning in various stages, I'm just curious as to what kind of public engagement has been done.
That question's to all three of them, right?
Yeah, to all three organizations. What kind of public engagement has been done to date?
Your worship to Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel. The public engagement for the Soaring Hearts Project actually began in two thousand and six with the rezoning that the council of the day approved in, I believe, the fall of two thousand and seven. There was two open houses that were held at the German-Canadian Hall that had over two hundred people attend each session. And then, of course, with the rezoning process, there's a public hearing that was held in council chambers. The second was more recent, was last year, where there was an open house again at the German-Canadian Hall. What the intent was is to demonstrate to the neighborhood what was going to be built. Back in two thousand and seven, we always thought that this would be an excellent redevelopment project. Now, the funding and the means were coming forward. There is a notification that was hand-delivered by myself within a sixty-meter radius of the address of the project. And we had about fifty people show up to that event. After the development permit was approved by the city administration and prior to the start of, or the commencement of construction, again, we delivered a pamphlet, delivered by myself, in a sixty-meter radius to inform people that the construction was underway.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Crowe Healy, or, that was your, Ms. Randall, actually, sorry.
As this parcel of land is already zoned multifamily, there's not a requirement to have, but we would do that in some way with the neighborhood. I think it's important to note that the community consultation for this project is based on the number of clients that MyCityCare sees from the West Side, and that all of the potential residents of this, of this project will be consulted and have been consulted all along the way. So that would be, at this time, that would be the, all part of the functional programming for the design and for the, for the project itself and its location. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney, would you like to help answer that question? Regards to community consultation?
Good afternoon. I was going to start off with a joke, but Corey was telling me, please don't. So the public consultation, we will begin that once we get the approval. But for, with our members, as you're all aware, we do have the Blackfoot Hub. And the staff have been meeting with our members that do reside within the tribe. Last month, Blood Tribe Chief and Council had a Christmas dinner here in the city at the Lethbridge Sandman, and we did announce the direction that we're going to our members that did attend that dinner as well. Through any of our, our community meetings and stuff like that, we have been updating our members. But once we get the approval, we will let the residents go.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think I'll just ask Mr. Malcolm this question. There's three applicants, only one is showing any commitment from the applicant. Does the RHI dollars, could those be a mortgage dollars assumed by the applicant? I'm just wondering, what kind of funds are they looking for seeing? Is that, like, would a mortgage on the property be acceptable as a commitment from? We're being asked for five million bucks here rounding up. We've only got four point five. I'm seeing only one applicant saying that, yep, we've got some skin in the game, too. Would a mortgage on the property or the facility be acceptable to RHI?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'm going to spin and look at Mr. Bartholomew, who's been engaged with CMHC, and see if he knows. There cannot be any debt associated with the project in the eyes of CMHC, so I don't believe a mortgage would be considered.
Has to be fully funded, okay? Thank you.
Members of council, is there any further questions to the presenters at this time? I'm going to, maybe we should go into camera, and then, of course, if there are questions that could spin off later on, we'll be asking a little later. But why don't we go in camera? I can't tell you how long we need camera, but at least thirty minutes, I would say. Yeah, we're going to go upstairs. Yeah, okay. So we're going to go upstairs, and then, do we make a motion going camera right now? So can I get a motion that we now go into camera? All those in favor? Opposed? And thank you for your patience as well, and thank you for the presentations. Thank, and thank you for your patience as well, and thank you for the presentations.
Thank you for your patience. We will reconvene in the next two minutes. We're just waiting for the city clerk to have the official resolution written up, so we do everything properly. So we will be reconvening in just three minutes here, hopefully. Thank you very much for your patience. Community members are viewing audience. Before we move on to the resolution, is there any other questions from members of City Council for the three presenters that presented? Do you have any more questions at all? Online, is there any questions? Seeing there's no questions, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for answering the questions. I do have the following resolution, and thank you, Deputy, not Deputy, rather, our city clerk for getting this brought forward to us.
And the treasurer.
And the treasurer, of course. Thank you. And all the administrative team. I'll read the following resolution, and it is sponsored by Councilor Croson. Rapid Housing Initiative: RHI Requests, 5.1. One, be resolved that City Council direct funding to the following organizations. Blackfoot Family Lodge: $1,970,240. Blood Tribe Housing: $1,500,000. MyCityCare Lefridge: $1,500,000. For a total of $4,970,240. Further be resolved that Council direct the $4,970,240 funding for the above projects be funded as follows. $919,048 from the Affordable Housing Capital Program. $3.5 million from D-32 Affordable Housing 2022 to 2031 CIP. And $551,192 from the funding held in reserve as matching funds for future projects from the 2022 to 2031 Capital Improvement Program adopted at the June 1, 2021 meeting of Council. And further be resolved that Council direct the funding be: A) conditional upon successfully securing a Rapid Housing Initiative approval and providing confirmation to the city. And B) provided subject to the execution of a third-party contribution agreement in a form satisfactory to the city manager. Councilor Croson, will you first entertain questions on this resolution?
Most definitely.
I'm sorry? Okay, perfect.
Yes.
Okay, sorry, there's a bit of delay. Is there any questions from members of Council in regards to this resolution? Councilor Carlson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and I should have asked previously through you to Mr. Malcolm or any of the presenters, perhaps. Are there letters of support needed from the municipality? Because that now would be the time to include any of those.
It is not required. The confirmation would come in the form of the past resolution. However, I certainly don't think it would hurt if you'd like to add that in.
Thank you through you to Councilor Croson, if I can, Deputy Mayor. Would you be willing to add something further, that the mayor be directed to write letters of support, or in support of these three projects?
I never mind adding more work to Mayor Higgins' load.
Excellent. In triplicate, then. Thank you. I'd be willing to make that amendment if it's friendly. Thank you.
Amendment has been accepted as a friendly amendment, so we will add it to the resolution as it's being printed out right now. Thanks, Mr. Westerson. Any other questions in regards to this resolution? Seeing none, Councilor Croson, would you like to introduce?
So we have before us three great projects. Based on our housing needs and our housing strategy, Lefridge can definitely use all three of these projects. And this resolution will help give them the best possible chance when they move forward to CMHC as part of the RHI grant funding. CMHC will then rigorously review them, and this is the third intake that we've had for RHI. No Lefridge groups have been successful in the first two phases. And having municipal support could be the deciding factor in whether one or all of these projects... these projects move forward. A large part of the grant criteria for RHI that CMHC looks at is municipal support. This is why we created the grant, because we know there were times when we would be required to support projects such as this. This is all capital funding. There's no ongoing operational support. And the money will only be spent if the projects are successful. Best-case scenario, we will leverage this money and get $30 to $40 million of housing in our community. Worst-case scenario, the money is returned and can be used for future projects. I'm hoping my colleagues will support this.
Thank you for introducing that. Councilor Palladino.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, I said this is an exciting project, and Belinda just mentioned the same thing. It's three unique projects. The city is being asked for funding to leverage for some $40 million in federal funding. At the risk of saying this, it's a no-brainer to hear at least two of the projects are built green and net zero. That's exciting to me, and it's a good news story. So I will be supporting this motion.
Thank you very much. And when I first got this, it's kind of like, you know, when someone asks you, what child do you like the most? You're kind of like, I like all my kids. I love them all. But you're kind of in that situation, because each presentation was really, really good. And I really do like this resolution, because it's showing that we fully support each one of these organizations and what they're going to do. I think the community would say, anytime you can leverage a dollar and get three in return, it's always a good move for the city of Lepbridge. And at worst case, you know, there actually is no worst case. Best case, actually, be you all three are approved, and if the city had to help find the funding, which we can find the funding to make it successful, I think it's a really good idea, and it's a good move. And it's become somewhat of a responsibility to the municipal government now is housing. And when I was first elected, it was kind of a provincial, but at the end of the day, we serve the citizens that live in this community, and it's important that we have the funding in place to support these kind of initiatives, especially when they're needed in our community at such a crucial time. So I want to thank our administration for working with us and finding a way to make this possible. I didn't want us to be in a situation where we had to pick two, and then one didn't get it. I'm glad that we can find a way to make all three projects a success. And so, and I also think that by showing this and by supporting this, it shows other levels of government that we're all in on this as well. And I think that helps the case if this does get approved. Councilor Campbell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm not going to say much more that hasn't already been said, other than it's great to see the community and the number of organizations that really care about the people, the disadvantaged people, and these are three projects that are outstanding. And, you know, although it's been said, it's going to be, it's a tough challenge to get all three accepted. It's a no-brainer to at least try to get that extra funding from the government, and it is a win-win situation. And if we're accepted, I'm going to call Travis Plated Head for my Blackfoot name, like he said. So just remember that. So I will definitely support the resolution.
Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel.
Thank you very much. I too will be supporting this. Giving these projects our support is the best opportunity for them to move forward and become successful. Best-case scenario, we spend 5 million, and we get 40 million back in return. So thank you to these organizations for their ongoing work in our community, and I look forward to hearing back from the feds and hope that they do support all three, since they haven't supported anything yet.
Mayor Higgins.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And yeah, this is already heard here, a no-brainer. What a great, great idea. And I can't thank the presenters enough, and also our administration, for working with these different groups and bringing this forward. You know, we put aside this $10 million here, previous council, for, in my opinion, things like this. And, you know, to be able to spend, as what Deputy Mayor had mentioned, $5 million out of $39 million is the contribution from the city, is great. We've been told it's a low-risk, high-return, and we obviously need housing within our community. And as I mentioned before, housing is a top priority for council. And the one big part that I thought was important, too, that question that was answered by all three organizations, was that this is sustainable. So the no future operating dollars are required, we've heard. And so, to be able to put that capital in now, I think is great. And again, I just want to thank the presenter for coming forward, and it's hopeful that these all get approval from the federal government, and we can move forward with them. Thank you.
Councilor Dotick.
Yes, thank you. Just sort of to correct Mr. Plated Hair, there's actually three other members of council that do have Blackfoot names. I am Sep Yochi Topi, which is Knight Rider. Councilor Carlson has a Blackfoot name.
Ikestansen.
Sorry?
Ikestansen.
And Councilor Belinda Crowson. So I am happy to be supporting this resolution as Knight Rider. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilor Croson, would you like to close?
I will simply close by saying that Nova and I will call the vote.
The question's been called. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, perfect. Moving right along in our agenda, I have the following bylaw signed by Councilor Campbell, the Downtown Business Improvement Area Tax Bylaw, 7.1.1. There may be some questions in regards to it, but I will read the second reading, and then if there's any questions, does that sound okay? Sounds good. And we did have first reading a few weeks back as well, just so members of council know that. Second reading, be resolved that bylaw 6388, the Downtown Business Improvement Area Tax Bylaw, be given second reading. And I do believe Acting Mayor has a question.
Yes, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. So through you to Mr. City Manager or your designate, a question with regards to procedure. So when I was taking a look at this bylaw and looking at Municipal Government Act Business Improvement Area Regulation, under the Alberta Regulations, it says under Financial Matters that the board must submit a proposed budget for each calendar year to the council for council's approval, and that that is supposed to happen before we approve the tax bylaw. Now, I asked the city clerk's office to check into it for me, and we, I do not believe you found any record of the budget.
Actually, we have representatives from Tax and Assessment here to answer the question.
Okay. Because I could not find that budget submitted to us at all.
And feel free to come to the microphone. Ms. Bogart.
Thank you to Deputy Mayor. This is the tax bylaw, so it's a little bit confusing in the regulations. There's a tax bylaw and a tax rate bylaw. The tax bylaw, really, I could argue, should be called the assessment bylaw, because the tax bylaw actually establishes how we are going to assess the businesses. And then the DBIA will come forward to council with their budget. And from there, when they come forward with the budget, then I can take their budget amount, and we can calculate what the mill rate will be, and present that in the tax rate bylaw in April.
Thank you very much for that clarification, and I think that helps also members of the community who were confused about why we didn't see that come forward first. Thank you.
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Any further questions before we move on to second reading? I've read second reading, so Councilor Campbell.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This has been an annual bylaw brought forward to council for tax and assessment to establish the downtown Lethbridge BRZ's assessment role. The assessment role must be completed to establish the mill rate for the annual DBIA tax rate bylaw presented in April, as we just found out. So I would ask for my colleagues' support.
Take that. Any other further debate? I'll take that as your opening and closing.
Yes.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Opposed? Carry's unanimous. And for third reading, signed by Councilor Campbell, be resolved that bylaw 6388, Downtown Business Improvement Area Tax Bylaw, be given third reading, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same.
Call a question.
Question's been called. All those in favor? So the next resolution is signed by myself. So that's all right? We didn't think the mayor would be six, so I'll... So how do I go? Can I read it out, my resolution, or do I...
Can we give it to Mr. Palladino?
Mr. Pall... Can I just give you this resolution? This is in regards to the increase of parking fines. Are you okay signing off on that? No?
No, I'm just...
No problem.
There's been a lot of discussion on this, and I've caught some complaints.
Okay, so just before we go forward, I want to make sure, I want to get this motion on the table here. So I need someone to sponsor this. Okay, thank you. Yeah. Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel has sponsored the following bylaw, 6393, Increase of Parking Fines, Amendment to the Traffic Bylaw, 5834. This is item 7.1.2. Councilor Carlson.
Thank you, Deputy... Pardon me. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just curious, there was some sort of discussion around this, and council, I know, has received some emails and discussion. I was wondering if there was any interest in referring this to one of our SPCs, so there could be some community feedback or consultation.
Well, that's a great question. So just so process, and I know I explained this to some people in the community, and some of the people in the audience kind of know our process pretty good. They've been here for a while. This isn't your typical bylaw, where people get to speak to the bylaw. So, but I think there was a lot of people that wanted to have a say in regards to this, not only through their emails and through written letter. And so, the only way that really could occur is we could refer this to an SPC. I did talk to, now, of course, we'd need a resolution or something, a directional resolution. I did talk to our infrastructure steward and his team, and this could, we could send this to an SPC, and we could actually, at the willingness of the chair, we could add this to the next SPC, which is this Thursday, add it to the agenda, and then a recommendation can come... So then people would have an opportunity, affected stakeholders or anyone in the community, have an opportunity to speak at that SPC, and then have questions answered by our administrative staff and team as well. And then if there's a direction after that, it can be sent to the next council meeting, and then we could be doing second and third reading. If there's a, if there's kind of a willingness to do that, I would first need...
Can I summarize?
Yeah, please, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. So it would go to Thursday's community safety meeting, because the mandate of parking falls under community safety. And then it would go to the 21st, February 21st. So I just wanted to acknowledge that 311 did receive 17 submissions over the weekend, 13 overnight, one today, plus what's in your agenda as well.
Perfect. And so that would allow people in the audience who are here today, or people that are not here today, to make a presentation via in-person, via email, to that committee this Thursday. So, but of course, I would need a motion for that. Otherwise, I have a motion signed or a bylaw signed by Acting Mayor Schmidt-Rempel. So is there a motion to move this?
Refer.
Refer this. So I have a referral motion from Councilor Palladino, that this be referred to the SPC for February 9th of this year. Is that what you're...
Correct. On Thursday, we have a meeting on Thursday, that's right.
And I, do we need a second or to that? No, but we do need to vote on that. Am I correct? And do we debate that?
You can definitely debate that, yes.
Can you explain the logic to your...
Well, we always talk about public consultation and community engagement, and I'm used to bylaws that you give them first reading, you have a public hearing, second and third reading. In this case, there was no public hearing, and not that it's required, but it's nice to do. If you're going to talk the talk, you got to walk the walk. And so, I'm suggesting we, I agree, we move this to the SPC on Thursday and go from there.
And the reason, I'll support this as well, after the debate. I know our administration is kind of like, needs to know exactly what we're doing, because budgets are based on this. I think the city manager would agree that budgets are based on it, so the sooner we can take action on this. So I'm glad through Mr. Sanchez, he said that we can have this, and you guys can speak to it on Thursday. So it's pretty much, it's a two-week delay then for consultation. Mr. Sanchez, did you want to add anything to that? No. Further debate?
Questions?
Questions? Is this a question on the... Mayor Higgins?
Yes, I just, actually, I was into just sponsors resolution.
Okay, so then I'll just, then I'll wait for you, because I think Councilor Milton-Hope has a question. Then I'll come back to you. Is that okay? Because I'm just entertaining questions.
Sure.
Councilor Milton-Hope?
There's no opportunity for the public to have interaction with council today.
No, under the procedural bylaw, you wouldn't be allowed today.
The only opportunity is to send this back to an SPC.
Fortunately, we have one coming up this Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Questions on referral?
I...
So debate? Councilor Higgins?
Actually, I do...
Mayor Higgins?
Sorry, I...
I'm getting too comfortable here.
I do have a question. I'm sorry if I could, if you'd entertain a question. I just wanted to know if administration, I know we're talking this Thursday, now that's a, it's a couple days, and I'm concerned that we may not get, you know, those that have the questions are not going to find out within two days, maybe all of them. So I'm just wondering if that's too soon, because we did, it's already this Thursday, so in a couple days, and I'm just wondering what the problem would be in having it at not this coming one on Thursday, but the following. It does delay it somewhat, and I know it's another month, but I just have that question. I'm not sure who could answer that. Maybe a city clerk or city manager?
Everybody's hitting the button at the same time. Mr. Mayor, you know, if that's the will of council, if council wants it to go to a subsequent meeting, we can do that. You know, we will speak to the budget decision and the financial implications that are associated with this at that time, but happy to do whatever the will of the council.
Because my question would be, if you've got an extra month, obviously, we were focused on that funding from the, from the revenue, I guess, from the fines, and so that would take an extra month, that would, we would not be collecting that. And so I'm just wondering if, I mean, if we wait till another month and hear this information, is there a way, we know now roughly what a month would be, if we take the amount divided by 12? Is that pretty easy to say, or no?
I was just talking to my esteemed colleague to my left here, and she made a suggestion, maybe instead of waiting a whole month, could we refer this to the economic SPC for next week? And then people have an opportunity to speak at that. Can we do that? So that would give the same issue...
So that would give, the same issue, you know, your members and all that, or the affected people that mostly wrote the letters and all that. So then next, is it next Thursday?
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday. It would give you an opportunity to speak and then you would have an opportunity to tell your members, you know, if you want to have a say on this, and then instead of speeding it in two days' notice and all that, I'm taking your nod as that would be better than Thursday. Yeah, if...
Absolutely. My heart kind of sank when I heard that you may well be making this decision on Thursday. We do need some time to let our folks know.
Okay, thank you. So...
Deputy Mayor, procedurally, procedure bylaw states the mandate of parking is community safety, but if council wanted to suspend that, they need unanimous consent to do that, to move it to economic. Is doable, but you do need unanimous consent of the council.
The reason why I think it might qualify for economic is it does have economic impacts to budget, budgeting and all that, so could it fit under that parameter?
It, it can, it, it does.
Yeah.
It is financial, but again, parking is under the mandate of community safety.
Either or. Yeah, perfect. So our, Mr. Counselor Palladino, just a second. So I wanted to make sure we're dealing with the motion that we have on the table here. We have a referral motion that it get referred to SPC, economic SPC. Do you want...
I have no problem filling them in to, to the economic one.
Of for next Wednesday. And the date on that is, we have it officially... February 15th, economic SPC.
So we would be publishing tomorrow.
Yeah, and this will be published tomorrow.
Deputy Mayor, also, just one thing, with all the submissions that we did receive from 311, they didn't come in through the portal, so they do have personal information on them. We would redact that personal information and include them in the agenda if that's council's desire.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Higgin, do you have anything else? So we have a new date, we have time. Okay, perfect. Counselor Milton Hope?
Well, this is going to be, this motion has now been amended to go to the Economic Standing Policy Committee on the February the 15th.
That's correct. Yeah. All right, so are you okay, everyone, is members of council, okay, if we call the question on that?
It has to be unanimous.
No, it only has to be unanimous if it, but, well...
Let's see if it's unanimous.
Okay, let's just see if it's unanimous. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you, it's carried. So this will be discussed at the next economic committee, economic SPC, which is next Wednesday, and that's be published tomorrow. Thank you. I think everyone's here for the pickleball still here too, so. Members of council, please refer to item 8.1.1. I have the following resolution signed by Acting Mayor Schmitt Rempel. D30 Legacy Park Pickleball Courts Capital Improvement Plan CIP Amendment. No recommendation from SPC, the below was defeated at committee. Be it resolved that the Economic Standing Policy Committee recommend that city council amend the capital improvement plan CIP D30 Legacy Park Pickleball Courts by adding $300,000 from the federal gas tax fund. And that was defeated, defeated 8-1, and council has the following options. Put forth administration's original recommended motion, which is above, and approve or defeat it, or put forth an alternate motion. Acting Mayor Schmitt Rempel.
So what we're looking at here is out of the SPC, out of last week's Economic Standing Policy Committee, the request for the additional $300,000 to go to the Legacy Park Pickleball Courts was defeated. And our administration is now looking for direction out of that as to what we would like to do since that motion was defeated and the $300,000 was not approved. One of the, based on my notes from last week, it wasn't that we didn't appreciate the project, we certainly all supported the project, it was the $300,000, which was 50% of the original spend, that was coming forward, so certainly increased that project more than, than we wanted to see. One of the things we did discuss was going back and looking at the CIP and evaluating what projects might come forward on this particular one. On some of the projects, our administration reported back that they were seeing a 5% to 10% increase on some of the other projects in, in the CIP. This was the first one that came forward. We wanted to take another look at what some of those other projects might be and perhaps evaluate them all at once before moving forward on any further decisions. Those are the notes that I have from our SPC. So with that, we can either move ahead with this same motion that came forward at SPC or we look at going back and making a motion to have administration look at other CIP projects, evaluate what might be coming forward and review them all together and move forward with a more fulsome plan and what CIP projects may need to be reevaluated and have costs increased.
Okay, questions?
Any questions?
Thank you, Acting Mayor. Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm just a bit confused on process here because I'm not sure how this lands at council. It was defeated at committee, and so my assumption was if there was anything else changing, it would come as an OBM or as such from a member of council. So I'm just, I'm unclear why it's in front of us today.
Thank you, Counselor. So, committee can only recommend, so what they, their motion was defeated, so there's nothing for council right now. So you have to either pick an alternate motion or try that motion again, and if it fails, then that's done.
And, and thank you for that because my assumption was that, that unless there was a new motion brought forward by a member of council at a council meeting, the CIP D30 just stays as is. And whether it can be completed or not is...
If council defeats it, it will, right? So that was a recommendation from committee, but council still has to make a vote.
Remember, this was done at an economic SPC?
If, if...
No, I understand that. What happened was that we recommended to council, well, we defeated it 8-1, okay, but that was at economic. Council is the one that passes the CIP, so therefore we have to, assuming it's going to be the same vote, vote on this here and then defeat it as council. So we've defeated as economic, but as people know, that sometimes things change between SPC versus council, even though it's the same people. So I think that's what the city clerk is trying to say, is you did it once, you got to do it again.
Right, they can only recommend from committee, there's no standing there. Council's the one that makes the adoption, the decision.
So Madam City Clerk, then, so what we should be doing is then we'd have to read the first operative. Am I correct?
Somebody has to sponsor a motion, and I don't, if Acting Mayor has sponsored the motion that was at committee...
This, this almost seems like the, the dog wagging the tail. Council is not saying we want to change the CIP. Like, I just don't, like, who, who's bringing this forward? Is, no one.
But the administration recommendation, recommendation kind of still stands, it's there, they wrote the report. Committee defeated it, now what does council want to do?
So why don't we do this, I got an idea here. So, Mr. Harper, he knows this inside out. So, Mr. Harper, from that resolution that was passed, or defeated rather, at our last, at that one meeting, what does that send the message to? What do you, what do you do now?
Through the chair, our interpretation of that decision at the SPC was that it was not going to move forward, and so we've continued now re-scoping that project to try to get it within the approved CIP budget.
And you, and you did that from hearing the different ideas that were brought around the table, you digest it. And so are you going to be coming back forward, explaining what you're going to be doing moving forward and you're going to...
No, we are going to be continuing with the approved, the current approved CIP, which was the addition of, well, actually, that's incorrect. What we will have to do, we've re-scoped it to price out and do six new pickleball courts. The existing approved CIP reflects improvements to the existing courts. So if we are not able to complete those, we will be coming back to ask for an amendment to the CIP to exclude those renovations to the existing courts and only do the new courts.
Thank you, Ms. Sherwood, I think that helps out a lot, asking that question. And so you, you folks and your team are carrying on, you didn't get the extra money needed at that one meeting. Do, Madam Clerk, do we need to pass another resolution or is, I think it's, I think the direction's already been given to that one SPC? We don't have to pass something else, do we?
You actually do, need to make some sort of decision.
Okay, so we need some kind of resolution then?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, and if, if no one is prepared to support the motion, then it dies.
Correct.
Counselor Dorick?
Sure, I'll, I'm prepared to introduce and vote against the resolution, can we put it back? That resolution that says be it resolved that the Economic Standing Policy Committee recommend that city council amend the capital improvement plan CIP D30 Legacy Park Pickleball Courts by adding $300,000 from the federal gas tax fund. I am introducing that in debate, which is my opening debate, is I will not be supporting this resolution.
And I think, I appreciate what you're saying, so now we're officially making this official in a council format versus an SPC, so we need to have that to close the loop. Sounds, so, Counselor Dorick has introduced the resolution, he's asking us not to support it, and so any further...
Yes. I had to read it.
Is there any further debate? Or first of all, any questions on that? I'm, debate on motion Counselor Dorick has introduced it? Counselor Campbell?
Just, just that we've heard, just, just for my own clarification, we've heard the, as we discussed at the, at the economic committee, that $300,000 was 50% more than what we had originally thought. And so my understanding is that administration will go and deal with the allotted amount and re, re, re-figure out how they're going to use the money that they have been approved. And with this defeating the, the extra $300,000, that just goes away, but they continue with pickleball courts that, but not necessarily with the extra $300,000. So it's, we still get pickleball courts and that was the important thing in my mind. So I'll be supporting the non-resolution or the no of this resolution.
So what you're asking is you're not supporting the resolution?
Exactly. I thought, I thought I made that pretty clear.
This resolution is one of those bizarro worlds kind of resolutions, but we need to do it.
Thank you.
Mayor Higgin?
Thank you, I just, I don't want to muddy these waters anymore, but I'm just thinking we, we give a resolution or a recommendation from Standing Policy Committee that it was to not do it. So I thought council was to support, so vote in favor of not doing it. Is that exactly what we're doing? Because now we're going to reintroduce another resolution. I thought we would just, matter of fact, I thought this would probably just be on a consent agenda that it was recommended from that council, we, or from that committee, and we support it. So we're supporting what's coming forward, so we're not voting again, yeah, I...
So, so just so you, okay, just here, so I think it's clear if you look at what's on the screen there. Be it resolved that city council amend the capital improvement program, CIP D30 Legacy Park Pickleball Courts by adding $300,000 from the, so this was the exact same resolution that economic had voted on a while ago, so it's the same resolution here. And so what Counselor Dorick is saying is, to be consistent, you would want to vote against this, and then that goes direction to the administration.
Thank you.
Well, depends, I'm open for persuasion. Counselor Carlson?
Oh.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I guess, I'm very confused about this, I don't think this should be here in front of council. What I thought would be coming forward after the discussion in economic was if council or administration brought forward some direction to re-scope or to amend D30. This is no amendment, this is just, this is a nothing burger to me. I thought what we were hoping to get was some actual direction that administration amend D30 to do the six courts or whatever it was. So this, this doesn't move us any further along. I was hoping to get something that moves us along, so maybe through you, Deputy Mayor, to city manager or designate, is there something we can actually amend or will that be coming forward later?
Our thought process was that we would, would re-scope it to try to get it within budget, knowing that potentially it was not as per scope that was the approved CIP. Rather than coming forward and asking for an amendment to the CIP now for scope and then putting it out to tender and risking it coming in over budget again and having to come back again to ask for another amendment for, for budget, we felt that we would re-scope it, put it out to tender, and if there was a requirement, we would ask for one CIP amendment. And that would potentially include scope and budget.
Would you like to close, Counselor Dorick?
Yeah, just, just a final comment. By voting against this resolution, we are preserving the already approved CIP D30 that was passed in the CIP, and as administration has told us, rather than doing the amendment now, they're re-scoping the project so that when they come back to council, the amendment hopefully will be, leave the money the same, but in terms of what the actual work being done will be changed. So that's presumably what the amendment hopefully will deal with, not the dollars and cents, but the actual scope of the project. I would ask for council's non-support of this resolution.
The question's been called. All those in favor? Opposed? Mayor Higgin, you're opposed?
Sorry, sorry, talking away with my mic off. Yes, I am opposed to this.
Perfect, thank you.
Nothing in favor, I have rights, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harper, as well, for explaining this.
So this one, this was a motion, but Jason's going to speak first, so whether he speaks and then that's the alternate. Okay, so don't even say that, just say, Mr. Elliott, do you have an update?
Okay. Thank you very much, members of council. It's always neat to have one of those resolutions. Moving right along, the Play On Canada request, Mr. Elliott, did you have a kind of an update for us of what's going on before we read anything?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Under the category of also weird and wonderful, this, this one too will be unique in that the, I'll, I'll jump to the, the end first and then I'll come back and provide a few more details. The request today is rather than provide council the information that was asked, that this be referred back to economic SPC for the April meeting. The reason being is that Play On Canada was unsuccessful in securing the federal grant money that they needed for this request. So essentially, their plan to organize their events across Canada is in jeopardy right now, and therefore they're, they're essentially postponing all activities for 2023. The request coming back in April will be a fulsome request as per councils or as per economic SPC's direction previously, which will indicate what sorts of in-kind activities the city would be prepared for or contribution, prepared to provide, in addition to the revised requests, which I suspect will remain the same at $50,000 per year for 2024, 25 and 26.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Questions from Australia? Counselor Carlson?
A lot of questions, I was just going to make, change my resolution to a motion to refer to...
I got it, right here.
April 19th, excellent, thank you.
Any other further questions from Australia? Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Elliott, part of the, the motion was to get feedback from local groups, organizations. That is possible to come forward at the April 19th. We can have some discussions with those local groups and get their comments as well?
Yes, we absolutely can, and in fact, that additional time will just ensure we can do a more comprehensive job because in talking to Ms. Simon today, actually, there are some other developments that are positive that could show synchronized support for this kind of activity in the downtown area, so we'll include that in our presentation. So we'll include that in our presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Seeing no other questions, Ms. Elliott, I have the following resolution signed by Counselor Carlson. 8.1.2, Play on Canada, Request for Major Event Grant Funding Request. Be it resolved that city council refer this item to the April 19th, 2023 Economic Standing Policy Committee meeting. Counselor Carlson?
Unless there's any further comment, I will just call for the vote.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Opposed? I do believe it's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Elliott. In order?
Yep.
All right. I have the following closed meeting. Counselor Palladino, Development Matter 14.1. Be resolved that city council refer this matter to administration to provide new information in return to the February 21st, 2023 closed meeting of city council. And further be resolved that city council direct that the closed meeting reports, documents, and discussions with respect to development matter remain confidential pursuant to Section 16, harmful to business interests of a third party, 21, harmful to intergovernmental relations, and 24, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection Privacy Act. Counselor Palladino?
Call the question?
Question's been called. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? I have the following resolution from closed meeting. Counselor Milton Hope. Lethbridge Fire and Emergency Services Contract Negotiations, item 14.2. Be resolved that, that council, as per the alteration of the Alberta Health Services Emergency Medical Service Ground Ambulance Service Agreement, see attachment one, approve one, the creation of 10.8, I don't know what that point eight's going to look like, but anyway, the creation of 10.8 full-time employees, FTE positions, and the associate ongoing contract annual review, revenue of $1,790,340 funded by Alberta Health Services for advanced and primary care paramedics to operate two 12-hour Class 1 ambulance seven days per week effective mid-April. Two, one-time funding of $304,594, $954 funded by Alberta Health Services for the purchase of two additional ambulances. And three, an amendment to the 2023 to 2026 operating budget for the associated operating cost and external billing revenue as follows. You can see it on the, can you scroll up there? I don't think I have to read that out. Do I, Madam City Clerk? No, okay. And further be resolved that council direct that the closed meeting reports, documents, and discussions with respect to the Lethbridge Fire and Emergency Service Contract Negotiations remain confidential pursuant to Section 21, harmful to intergovernmental relations, and 24, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Milton Hope?
Thank you. Unless there are any questions, I'll do my opening.
Mayor Hagan? Questions?
No, just debate. Thanks.
Okay, so please introduce.
Good. Thank you very much, Acting Mayor. This is a good news story for the city of Lethbridge. We get two additional ambulances, 10 additional advanced life support paramedics at a cost incurred by or managed by the Alberta Health Services. This is going to greatly improve the response times and the response by Lethbridge Fire and Emergency Services. Debate.
Mayor Hagan?
Thank you. I, I wouldn't add too much more to that. Thank you, Counselor Milton Hope. I did want to just give a huge shout out to our, our fire chief. There's a lot of advocacy work that's gone into this over the, over the years, and to have something like this come forward that's going to definitely benefit our community and, and not through taxation. I know dollars all come out of one pocket, but through the promise to be able to put these additional services into our community is, is fantastic. So just a great news story, and I just wanted to make sure we didn't go through it, just throw up the hands and vote in favor if that was the way it was going to be, but to, to just say, this is, this is great for our community. That's a fantastic news story. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Hagan. Any further debate? Seeing no other debate? Counselor Milton Hope, would you like to close?
My opening and closing was combined, hence so therefore I'll call a question.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Opposed? It's unanimous. I have the following resolution from closed meeting from Nick, from Counselor Nick Palladino, Development Opportunity 14.3. Be it resolved that city council direct that the closed meeting discussions with respect to the development opportunity update remain confidential pursuant to Section 16, harmful to business interests of a third party, and 24, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Palladino?
Call the question.
All those in favor? Opposed? Holding resolution coming out of closed meeting. Acting Mayor Schmidt Rempel, Sponsorship Opportunity 14.4. Be resolved that city council approve the new sponsorship agreement as provided in the confidential attachment, and further be resolved that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the same. And further be resolved that the city council direct that the closed meeting discussions, reports, documents, and attachments remain confidential pursuant to Section 23, the local public bodies' confidences, 24, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, with the sponsorship being announced publicly by the end of Q1 of 2023. And further be resolved that city council direct administration to return to a future Economic Standing Policy Committee by the end of Q1 2023 with the, with requested, with information requested by council. Acting Mayor?
I'll call the vote.
All those in favor? Yeah, opposed? It's unanimous. I have the following resolution signed by Counselor Dorick from closed meeting. The Bowman Building Opportunities Assessment 14.5. Be it resolved that city council, one, reject the unsolicited offer to lease, and, two, direct administration to execute the confidential direction provided in closed session and return to the March 15th, 2023 Closed Economic Standing Policy Committee meeting, and further be resolved that city council direct that the closed meeting reports, documents, and discussions with respect to the Bowman Building Opportunities Assessment remain confidential pursuant to Section 23, local public body confidences, and 24, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Dorick?
I just want to add a couple, a couple things. I just want people to understand that there has been no decision yet made by city council as to the Bowman in terms of whether it might be sold, it might be leased, whether to a community group or to the private sector. I'm only making this comment because there seems to be some concern that something has occurred to the Bowman. It has not. I would ask for council support.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimous. I have the following resolution from closed meeting from Counselor Carlson. Intergovernmental Meetings 14.6. Be it resolved that city council direct the closed meeting reports, documents, and discussions with respect to the intergovernmental meetings remain confidential pursuant to Sections 21, harmful to intergovernmental relations, and 24, advice from officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Counselor Carlson?
You'll call for the vote.
Question's been called. All those in favor? Opposed? Council updates? Item 12 on the agenda? City council updates? Seeing none? Perfect. I guess we'll now adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Parker.
No problem, buddy. Thank you. Get well.